Welcome to the 6:30 PM, December 8th, 2020 Titusville City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you read the rules to speak?
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting, and all comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. And finally, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have no minutes to approve at this time, so City Manager, would you move us to presentations and recognition?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Before we go there, with permission, we'd like to go ahead and withdraw item 9H. It doesn't require a vote or anything, but if anybody's here for that item, that item will not be heard this evening.
9H being withdrawn. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And we're on to item 5A, which is a presentation of the Titusville Farmington, TIFA LLC, FY 2021 budget and FY 2022 pro forma. And Mr. Ball and Mr. Sean Sauffer are here for your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Sauffer. I'm the utility director for the city of Titusville, and I've joined with Jim Ball, Tifa member for the city of Titusville. So this is a presentation only. Approval of the budget will occur on the consent agenda, but I wanted to take just a few minutes of your time to talk about Tifa, talk about some of the history, and explain a little bit about what Tifa is. This is the 11th budget for Tifa LLC, and by the names, the TI stands for Titusville, the FA in Tifa stands for Farmington Water Resources, which is a subsidiary of Miami Corporation. Prior to the activation of the area for Wellfield, Titusville's water was supplied through the Area 2 and Area 3 wellfields. Area 2 is on the north end of town, Area 3 is on the south end of town. These are single-water source aquifers. We have a little diagram here that talks about those wellfields. And so let's talk a little bit about superficial aquifers. They are unconfined. They lie close to land surface. They're typically pretty shallow, and with that, they are susceptible to contamination and saltwater intrusion, as well as they're susceptible to droughts and low rainfall. So back in the 90s, we had identified a problem with the city's water supply. We were projecting growth in population, and we were also seeing that the water quality in those official aquifers was degrading. So in 1999, the city commissioned a study to find a new source of water. The goals, the objectives were to find a safe, reliable, and economically feasible supply of water. The study looked at five alternates for the city of Titusville. I won't go through all five, but we will talk about the most expensive happened to be increasing the purchase of water from the city of Cocoa. But what we found to be the most feasible, and also happened to be the least costly, was to develop an additional wellfield at the north end of Brevard County. So here's a map that kind of shows you the general area of where the wellfield is. You can see that Titusville is highlighted in the light green color and up in the very northwestern extreme of Brevard County. That is the location of the Area 4 wellfield. So after the city decided which activity to move forward with, there was work that was commenced to begin the construction and actually the sourcing of the Area 4 wellfield. Through that process, there was a legal challenge from the landowner at that time, and back in the early 2000s, the city attorney's office, working with Miami Corporation, created a settlement for the wellfield. And that settlement included the creation of Tifa LLC. Could we advance the slide one, please? There we go. So some of the details about Tifa LLC, it is a limited liability corporation that's 50% owned by the city, 50% owned by Miami Corporation. It functions only as a raw water utility. The only customer of this utility is the city of Titusville. It includes an administrative board. We hold regularly scheduled monthly meetings. We also prepare annual budgets and go through an independent audit. Some other just minor details about this, Tifa and the wellfield itself does supply two-thirds of the raw water of the city of Titusville, so it is a significant source of water for the city. And so as part of those regularly scheduled meetings, Mr. Jim Ball sitting here next to me, he is the city's representative at those meetings, and now I'll let him talk just a little bit about his position on the board and what he does for the city of Titusville.
Well, it's good to be back. Essentially, I serve as a citizen representative appointed by the city council to this board to provide oversight, management, to both the staff operation and work with our partner, Farmington. I can tell you, it's been a good year. I don't know if you remember from last year, we had some questions about the cost of the insurance. We were able to, I urged, you know, an investigation of how we could cut those costs. Sean will go into more detail about how we ended up in the operating budget for this year, but I was very pleased with that, and I think you'll be pleased as well where that went. So it's really, staff makes it an easy job, and they do a great job, and it's a pleasure to serve in this function, and I can tell you that I think we have a very effective and it's working out well partner in Farmington Water Resources, and I think it just couldn't be better for the city of Titusville. So again, I'm always happy to answer any questions you may have, and I serve at your pleasure, and it's an honor to do so. And again, staff does all the heavy lifting, and my role is to basically, you know, be a fiduciary, have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Titusville to look at what's going on in the cost and such, and to try to make sure we're doing the very best job of managing that.
Thank you, Jim. There we go. So we'll go into some of the budget drivers for the 2021 budget for Tifa. It is on an annual budget, so that starts January 1. We were able to reduce costs in a number of areas this year. We have some reductions in maintenance costs. We're also able to lower some of our costs in parts and consumables, as well as some of the planned outsourced labor we've been able to take care of in-house. As Jim mentioned, we also spent a lot of time working on the insurance costs, and that is one of the major costs for Tifa, and definitely had a lot of help from city staff as well as Miami Corporation, and we realized some significant reductions in those insurance costs, as well as the burdened labor rate for vehicles for water production has reduced as well. And so one of the other things I just want to remind city council is that all maintenance is done by the city of Titusville, and we are paid by Miami Corporation, or by Tifa, in fact, for those maintenance activities. We do monthly work orders and track that, track those activities. So let's take a look at the water rate projections. The prior estimate, last year, we were expecting to come in at about $1.16 per thousand gallons of water purchased from Tifa, but we were able to lower that down to $1.11. I'm sorry, we were projecting $1.17 last year, what it would be in 2021. We were actually able to come in at $1.11, and we're also expecting to maintain that water rate going into 2022 as well. Okay. So that brings me to the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Just as a reminder, the approval of this budget is part of your consent agenda.
Correct, and thank you for the report. I always appreciate that on your yearly basis. Counsel, anybody have any questions? I don't see anybody written up here. Then we have no action required, and we move forward to the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is on to boards and commissions. The Titusville Environmental Commission semi-annual report, I believe we have a presenter for that report.
Is it Michael Mijak?
Name an address for the record, sir.
Michael Mijak, Alpine Lane, Titusville, Florida.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys, too, Mayor, Vice Mayor. And welcome, Mr. Joe Robinson, who I've dealt with for many years in our city. It's a pleasure to see you up here. I actually was under the impression that there was no report needed to be given for the environmental commission, that the TEC had voted on what was to be handed and it was to be accepted without discussion, and so I signed up to object. So I would like to speak out against the Titusville Environmental Commission report. So if I may, unless you have any questions before I get started.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question for you. Are you speaking as a citizen or are you speaking as an officer of the commission?
I am a member of the commission. I am not allowed to speak for the commission.
Right, right.
So I am signing up a card to speak in objection to this report, so that you'll understand why we have an issue with the report.
Mr. Mijak?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. I'm from the city clerk's office.
Yes.
We had, it was told to us that this item would be presented, and that's why I called you, sir. I know no formal action is being requested tonight.
It's not. I signed up a card to speak against it.
And I can go with that, Mr. Mijak. The question I would have is, right at this moment on the agenda, it's the Titusville Environmental Commission presentation.
Yes.
Are you giving this presentation?
I have been assigned to give the presentation by the Titusville Environmental Commission. I'm here in two roles. One is to give the presentation because I was asked to by the commission, and two, I wish to speak out against the report. That's a second issue. So however you want to address it.
Advisory, would we need to have him give the presentation and then come up separately as a citizen who objects to it?
If he's going to give the presentation, this would be the time to do it. There's no vote required. We typically do not take cards on presentations because there's no proposition before council.
You're right.
That would normally come under petitions and requests if they're upset with something going on at TEC, or they have their own opinions as a citizen that they want to talk about a board about. That would typically be done under petitions and requests.
So at this time, you would be speaking to give the TEC presentation, report, and if that is not what you're going to do at this time, then we would ask that you not speak and then come up during petitions and requests.
Okay.
All right?
That'll be fine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So the Titusville Environmental Commission report as?
As written.
Yes, sir.
And no action required?
No action required.
We move to the next item.
Yes, sir. Now we're on to 6B, which is the North Brevard County Hospital District Board. The term of regular member Robert Jordan expires on December 31st, 2020. He has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a four-year term to expire on December 31st, 2024. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration. In addition, the term of Mr. Stan Rets expires on December 31st, 2020. This appointment is made by the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners and confirmed by city council. We have confirmed that the actual county commission did appoint him earlier this evening.
Correct.
The, let's see, Mr. Rets has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this commission, and there is a Scrivener's error with his term to expire. In your report, it says December 31st, 2020. That's actually December 31st, 2024.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And there are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Thank you. Clerk, are there any cards? Counsel, any comment? Can I have a motion?
I'd move to...
Let's ask, Mr. Jordan, are you gonna abstain?
You have to.
You gotta give me a tag.
Yeah. I was envisioning that we'd get the motion, get it motioned, and then I'm sure that would happen. If it didn't, I'd make a comment.
That would be done before the vote.
Correct, absolutely correct.
So I would move to reappoint Robert Jordan to another term with the North Brevard County Hospital District Board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, Mr. Jordan.
Yes, sir. Because you're voting on something that I would like to do, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, sir. We will take a roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan is abstaining. Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We move on to petitions and requests.
No, we still have to do Stan Rets.
I thought we... Separately?
You'll need to do a confirmation of Mr. Rets, yes.
Okay, separately then. Go ahead, motion?
We move to confirm Stan Rets to another term. Well, I actually just confirmed him to the council.
Yeah, that's, that was my confusion.
Confirm the appointment.
County Hospital Board.
I got you.
Yeah.
And we have Member Robinson with the second. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Both are approved. Thank you, guys, for serving.
Mayor, let's say, Member Jordan, you abstain on the first one?
Yes.
If you could state the basis, whether it's an appearance of a conflict, even though not a conflict, to state that, and then you'll need to fill out the paperwork and file that with the clerk. The basis of why you're abstaining, otherwise you would need to vote.
All right. Thank you for that chastisement. I am abstaining from voting on my position with the Paris Medical Center, just to make sure that there is no conflict or, what was the word you, appearance of conflict of interest.
I appreciate that, Member Jordan, and I appreciate your service on that board for many years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I am now able to move to petitions and requests. Petitions and requests, if there anyone out there, yes, there is. This is the time. And thank you for your patience, Mr. Mijak.
I wanted to tell you about a happy story in the development of a park in western Titusville. There was a need to serve the children in this part of town, and so the idea was born. I'm going to tell you the story about a group of citizens who worked tirelessly for almost two years. They worked with the property owner and the city to pull together a concept plan to preserve this small spit of land, excuse me, by proposing its inclusion and procurement through Forever Florida. This is the story of Tortoise Ridge Park at Wally's Pond. As you might imagine, this parcel of land was very special, but for several reasons. The local citizens of the area had hoped this park would provide needed space for their kids to romp and play, and they understood the need for environmental education, too. The vision for this park was one filled with walking and bike paths, a few exercise kiosks, and lots of exterior signage to identify the various native flora and fauna in this area. Amenities included a fenced dog run, a meditation pond, and a butterfly garden. The park was also to be connected through the city's bike paths, so that along with the trails within the city, it would connect from park to park and provide a natural way for cyclists to get around. It was special to the Floridians as well, in general, because it was one of the few remaining parcels of undisturbed Atlanta Coastal Ridge. Known to the environmentalists, this unique scrub habitat was important today and is disappearing. The land was special to the city, too, because it's in our area of critical concern. So it was a win-win-win. It was a win for the younger citizens, it was a win for the city, and it was a win for Forever Florida. They had our work cut out for them. We dealt with the experts from Brevard County, FDEP, FWC, their biologists. We even brought in the late, great Dr. Ray Ashton from the University of Florida. He's a preeminent gopher-tortoise expert. I can see I'm going to run out of time. Ashton verified that Tortoise Ridge Park contained suitable and ample enough habitat to sustain three gopher tortoises per acre, making it the perfect place for receiving mitigation bank dollars for gopher tortoises who lost their mitigation battles. What's more, FDOT was in the planning stages for widening I-95 at the time. I'm sorry, my voice is shaking. Can I sit down? I'm having difficulty standing.
Absolutely.
I am disabled.
Stop the clock, please.
Thank you, sorry.
Take a breath, relax. Wait a minute.
Dealing with back injuries are not fun.
Okay.
What's more, FDOT was planning, in the planning stages of widening I-95 at the time, they wanted to install a six...
Hold up, Mr. Mijak. Can you, how many more minutes do you need to complete?
Probably about three. I got a page and a half to go. I'm a page and a half in.
We want to go three or two?
Two.
We're going to go two minutes, so get what you can in two minutes. Do I have a...
All right.
Wait, let me finish that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Two minutes.
Okay. FDOT was widening at the time, and they were planning to install a multi-acre, I think it was six or more, retention pond, and we thought that was perfect, so we integrated that into the plan to make a structured wetland, the meditation pond, into the site where FDOT was going to dump the water off of I-95, storm water injected into the wellfield. What could be better? So we returned back to our lives, having this win, knowing that Florida Forever would come through for us. But then the unthinkable happened. The state legislature suspended funding to Forever Florida. We waited, no funding returned, nobody followed up. The citizens had done their part. They developed the concept, drafted the proposal, consulted with experts, and worked with the government, and still the government failed us. Why? Against the commission vote. Our charter says, "The Environmental and Water Resources Commission shall study general environmental conditions in and surrounding the city of Titusville and make specific recommendations to city council regarding the environmental effects of existing conditions of future public and private developments, subject to particular environmental and water resource concern." Imagine the shock I would have felt as the chair of the Environmental Commission had Berkshire come across my desk. We ended up running off a Walmart from the location of Garden Street and I-95, across the street from the elementary school, fearful of the trucks that would be coming in every day. We saved it, we thought, forever through Forever Florida, and now we have 160 home subdivisions.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you for your information. Anybody else on petitions and requests who'd like to come up and speak?
Thank you.
City manager, you move us to consent?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, on to consent, are there any council members that would like to pull any of the consent agenda items?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards on any of the consent agenda items? Mayor and council? Mayor and council, with your permission, I'd like to read the consent agenda items for the record prior to your vote.
Please do.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the purchase of Microsoft SQL Server Enterprise Core Edition software from SHI Software House of Somerset, New Jersey for $102,831.12. Approve the purchase of Dell Power Edge R440 server from Dell for $8,011. Approve the budget transfer of $110,842.12 and authorize the mayor to execute the contracts upon review and approval by the city attorney. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the Tifa LLC FY 2021 budget and authorize the mayor to execute the consent of members. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the contract to Alpha Levalle Incorporated of Richmond, Virginia in the amount of $67,803.59 at the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility for the rehabilitation of belt filter press and authorize the mayor to execute a contract necessary for the purchasing instrument and approved by the purchasing and city attorney. Consent agenda item 8D, approve resolution number 39, 2020, adopting the 2020 Brevard Prepares Local Mitigation Strategy Plan. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the award of contract bid to Hinterland Group Incorporated of Cocoa, Florida for South Carpenter Water Main Extension Project in the amount of $488,130 and authorize the mayor to execute the contract upon review and approval of the contract by the city attorney. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the use of the award of the State of Florida contract to Fisher Scientific in the amount of $135,081.16 for the purchase of one ICAP ARQ Inductive Couple of Plasmic Mass Spectrometer and accessories for laboratory services and authorize the mayor to approve the execution necessary instruments to purchase these, the purchase documents. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the award to Kimberly Horn Associates Incorporated in the amount of $84,490.20 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to review of multiple locations for bicycle improvements in preparation of a presentation to City Council. Additionally, authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the award of the annual contract with the initial term of one year and four op, four one optional years, one-year renewals, to Diva Group LLC of Kissimmee, Florida for the purchase and replacement of HAPCO Whiteway Lighting Poles with the annual authorized amount not to exceed $50,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8I, approve amendment one to the contract between the city and BMAP LLC of New Smyrna Beach, Florida for the addition of services to be provided at Dre Pond and the Osprey Pond for the additional contract authorized amounts listed in exhibit one of $299,250, which increases the total authorized contract amount to $599,258.50 over four-year period of the installation and maintenance, which runs from 2019 to 2023 for the floating wetland islands. This amendment adds two additional ponds and authorizes the mayor to execute the amendment of the contract, subject to review and approval by the city attorney and city manager. In addition, allow the purchase orders to be issued on an as-needed basis, not to exceed the authorized contract amounts. And you do have a resolution, so a roll call vote will be required, sir.
Which is kind of what we do these days, isn't it? Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor?
One more.
Did he not remove H and still read H as part of?
Nine H.
That was nine H.
Nine H. It's a different item. Everything that he read is on there. Okay, Member Jordan?
I wanted to make the motion, so...
Okay, good, good. Well, then, let me, let me go through this. Uh, there are no cards, and outside of Member Jordan's to make the motion, I see no lights. Uh, Member Robinson had a question that was answered, so I look for the motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8I.
Moved by Member Jordan, second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Nelson. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
The consent agenda passes unanimously. Uh, city manager, would you move us into the ordinances?
Onto ordinances, second readings, public hearing, and related actions. This is agenda item 9A, ordinance number 25, 2020, correcting discrepancies in zoning code use tables, primary uses, and the city attorney will read for the record this item.
Good luck.
Ordinance number 25, 2020, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 28 zoning to correct omissions and inconsistencies between permitted, conditional, and limited uses in Article 5 Use Standards and Article 4 Use Table, specifically amending sections 28-54 Use Table, 28-73A Live/Work Unit, 28-78A Residential/Professional Use, 28-81A Town Homes, 28-93A Animal Shelter, 28-99A Bakery/Retail, 28-101 Bed and Breakfast Dens, 28-111A Clothing and Shoe Stores, 28-117A Drinking Establishments Bar/Tavern/Lounge, 28-118A Dry Cleaner, 28-122A Financial Institutions, 28-125A Funeral Establishment Without Crematory, 28-126A Furniture Store, 28-129C Grocery Store, 28-131A Hospitals, 28-132A Hotel/Motel, 28-138A Laundromat, 28-151 Outdoor Storage, 28-152A Package and Parcel Delivery Services, 28-156A Personal Services, 28-160A Postal and Mailing Services, 28-165A Radio and Television Sales, 28-166A Repair and Service for Small Equipment Items, 28-171A Shoe Repair, 28-176A Transit Accommodations, 28-181A Veterinarian, 28-201A Bakeries and Confectionaries, 28-202A Bottling Plants, 28-209A Laboratory Research and Testing, 28-210A Light Manufacturing, 28-218A Retail or Wholesale of Products Manufactured On-Site, 28-220 Transmission Tower, 28-22A Warehousing Wholesale, 28-223 Welding, Metal, Working Fabrication, 28-231A Airpark, 28-232A Airport, 28-236A Church, 28-238A Community Centers, 28-239 Community Service, 28-242A Family Daycare Homes, 28-248A Nursing Homes, Convalescent Homes and Extended Care Facilities, 28-249A Passenger Terminal Facilities, 28-253A Public Utility, 28-255A Schools, Public or Private, 28-256A Vocational School, 28-272A Golf Course, 28-274A Park, Public or Nonprofit, 28-275A Recreation and Commercial Amusement Indoor, and 28-276A Recreation and Commercial Amusement Outdoor, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
Just so you know, counsel, the city attorney knocked off two minutes of the time as he rehearsed this previously, so we applaud his efforts, along with staff, um, taking on this effort. At the November 18th, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this ordinance as written. Ordinance 27, 2016 adopted and updated the code structure, including the creation of larger use tables contained in section 2854 of the individual use standards tables, section 2861 through 2827. In addition to correct any errors within ordinance 27, 2016, staff has reviewed the use tables and the use standards tables for internal consistencies and correctness, based on staff's analysis during the code update, previous code versions, and existing code language. The proposed ordinance includes a variety of changes intended to ensure the internal consistency of corrections of these errors. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions. This is your final reading, public hearing on this item.
Yes, this is a second and final reading, and Ms. Busaka, first of all, I would say that, uh, as long as I took him to read, I can only imagine what it took you and your staff to clean up. And for those of you sitting here, and I'm thinking as he's reading all this, you guys are, what is this about? What, you know, it's basically the cleaning up of the ordinances that haven't, it's kind of like when I clean out my garage every third year. It's really, it's really something. So Ms. Busaka and your team, because I know you'll go that direction, wow, thank you. And is there any comment or concern? Council members, any questions for Ms. Busaka or staff? Any cards to be pulled?
Uh, yes, sir.
Then we can move forward on 9A with a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, ordinance number 25, 2020, correcting discrepancies in zoning code use tables, primary uses.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Move to 9B.
Onto item 9B, ordinance 26, 2020, correcting discrepancies in zoning code use tables, accessory uses, and the city attorney will read for the record the ordinance.
Yes, and again, this is your second reading, the second public hearing. Ordinance number 26, 2020, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 28 zoning to correct permitted, conditional, and limited uses in Article 8 Accessory Use Standards, to be consistent with Article 7 Accessory Use Table, specifically amending sections 28-342 Accessory Use Table, uh, 28-351 Accessory Dwelling Unit, 28-353 Attached Screen Porch, 28-356 Clubhouse, 28-363 Outdoor Display of Merchandise, 28-367 Recreation Court, 28-370 Screen Enclosure to Screened Roof, including Pool Enclosures, and 28-373 Temporary Storage Units, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted 6-0 to approve this ordinance as written. Ordinance 27, 2016, adopted and updated code structure, including the creation of larger accessory use tables contained in section 28, 342 of the accessory use standards table, section 28, 351 through 28, 373. In effort to correct any errors within this ordinance, 27, 2016, staff has reviewed the use tables and use standards for consistencies correctness, and based on staff analysis during code update of previous versions of existing code language, the proposed ordinance includes a variety of changes intended to ensure, um, consistency and corrected the errors. Ms. Busaka?
Ms. Busaka or staff, any comments? Thank you. Uh, counsel, any questions? Clerk, any cards?
Uh, yes, sir.
I'll take a motion on 9B.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 26, 2020, correcting discrepancies in zoning code use tables, accessory uses.
We have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. We move to 9C.
9C is the ordinance 27, 2020, capital improvement element, annual update, comprehensive plan amendment number two.
Ordinance number 27, 2020, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville for the 2021 through 2025 horizon relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
At the December 2nd, 2020 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommended denial of this action 6-1. The members requested more transparency with capital improvements planning and that the staff's report should explain the reason the CIP items changed since the last CIE in the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2018. Section 163.31773B of the Florida statute requires the city's five-year capital improvement program of the capital improvement element to be updated annually. All local governments are required to include a CIE in the comprehensive plan that considers the need for and location of public facilities and provides a component that outlines principles for construction, extension, or increases in capacity of public facilities, as well as a component that outlines the principles for correcting existing public facility deficiencies, which are necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. This includes Brevard County School District's 2020 through 2021 and 2024 to 2025 District Facilities Work Program adopted by the Brevard County School Board on November 17th, 2020. The planning period for this element is five years. Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions, and we also have Water Resources Director and Public Works Director, since these are capital projects. Should you have any questions about these items?
And thank you, Ms. Busaka. Anything at this time? I've got the feeling there will be. I'm, for my own curiosity, clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Uh, sir, we don't have any cards at this meeting. Uh, two individuals did submit emails for the public hearing.
I did see that.
Kay Saint Ange and William Klein, but no cards otherwise.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Member, Member Robinson, are you up or not?
Yes, I just, out of my, you know, nosiness and curiosity, uh, the one that opposed is that simply because enough, not enough information was made available?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, there were some specific concerns discussed about reuse lines, about where the change, why there were changes from one year to the next. There were also some specific concerns related to roads and some information that they felt was required as far as water planning.
Okay.
I'm sorry, storm water.
Storm water. You good?
Thank you.
All right, Member Jordan?
Yeah, I just need to, a little more clarification. What does it mean by transparency? Were you not giving enough information? Is it required?
Yes, sir. I believe that was what their, their concern was. They did not feel that it was sufficient to simply have total amounts of money. They wanted to understand, for instance, which roadways were being improved, which, where the areas of the sidewalks were that were being improved. The concern about the storm waters, they wanted to understand the specific storm water projects that were going to be done. So they wanted to know about specific projects rather than simply monetary totals.
But the requirements, as far as the report is concerned, does it require that?
No, sir. This is consistent with the requirements of both the state and our ordinance.
Okay. So if you had supplied that, that would have been in the report that you would have submitted to the state?
Well, actually, this report's only required to be submitted to the state every seven years. The only reason that we do it is because we have a, we have an ordinance that says we will update it.
To play off of that question, uh, from Member Jordan, it's different from this year, according to the P&amp;Z, one of their concerns is it's, it's different from last year to this year.
When they reviewed the total amounts, the actual form looks the same, but when they reviewed the total amounts of money, they didn't understand why there was a different amount in these boxes.
Okay, and again, it goes back to, I believe, Member Jordan's thought that it's changed from the state, meaning that our requirements are different.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The state has changed. This used to be a state requirement, and we would have to adopt this and send it to the state. That changed several years ago, so when we, when that changed, we changed our format. But I think that the concern was that they did, that members of the P&amp;Z wanted to see specific projects, and they only saw money, and they didn't understand why we had said we would spend X number of dollars, and then we only spent another, at Y number of dollars.
Is it simpler, or, and I see that side, I see that point, but I also see that sometimes the rules change, and the requirements change, and we're meeting those requirements. We are meeting the requirements. Do you think, and I don't know if it's fair to ask you, do you think, do staff think, that it would be clearer if we went with the way the P&amp;Z wants it? Is it clear that this is where the money is going?
I think that you need to ask the, the agencies that actually provide this money to, this information to us. We are the ones who simply... We are the ones who simply compile it from the agency, from Water Resources and, yeah, Public Works, thank you, I needed help, and Public Works. And I, I don't know what the operational issues for them are if we were to, to provide that additional information. The planning department can compile whatever information, and if the council this evening decided that they would like to see additional information, we can certainly compile that, we can send it back to P&amp;Z, we can bring it back to you at a later date. There's no specific deadline by which we have to do this. We simply have to do it once a year. Typically, we do it in December because by that time, the budget's been amended, and we've had a chance to look this over, but this is as council asks. But you might want to speak to Sean, excuse me, and, and Kevin, in case they have issues that we can.
And I would hear this from, from anybody, I'd be glad to do that, but in terms of transparency, which seems to be the concern from P&amp;Z, do you feel that the, meeting the requirements is transparent and clear enough?
I think it depends on what you want out of this. If you want to know that, yes, we're spending money, and yes, we plan to meet our level of service concurrency requirements, then this does that, where it says that we're going to spend X number of dollars on sidewalk repair and sidewalk infill. If you want to know specifically what sidewalks are being improved, it does not do that. So I think it's what you want to accomplish with your, with this information.
That's a good explanation. Vice Mayor.
Okay, let me say this. Pulled up the statute, I know the guys work crazy hours, and they really work hard, but I think the Florida statutes is looking for something a little more than what they gave us, and they sort of gave us the bare bones. We're going to spend X amount on roads, we're going to spend X amount on sidewalks, we're going to spend X amount from the water department, and their questions were, we have, I don't think they are looking for, we are going to pave road A, B, C. They are looking more for, well, for one of the things they said was the reclaimed water and that, and 2016, I think they said, it was part of the comp plan, and now it isn't. And so they were asking, what kind of projects are we looking at, not the names of the roads that we're paving, but what kind of projects are we looking?
Case of reclaimed water. And, and Sean is probably going to jump up here if I say this wrong, but the, the council directed that they do a long-term study, and that study is underway, but that's all we can tell you right now, is that study is underway, and it will not be completed yet for some time.
Well, one of the comments that was made was, if our constituents ask us, what are we spending money for? We have no idea. And reading the report, I read the report, and I just had like big question mark, what is this? I will say the statute says that we get to pick the format, but the format is, it should express goals, objectives, policies, and strategies, and I don't think that quite does that. And I, and I gotta tell you, I know Brad Parrish did it, and I know he's a hard worker, but, and I know he has a lot on his plate.
Well, this is the process that we've done the same? You've seen this at least once, if not twice, before. So if you want to change that, you just have to tell us, but we are doing what we have done in the past.
I personally would like to have a little more information so that when somebody looks at it, we know a little bit more about what we're doing. One of the things that I was looking at when I was going through it, I was like, wait a minute, we have a new sewer plant coming up, and yet, in reading the report, we would, we would not know that. I mean, those kind of things. And I know I'm just picking out one as an example, but we'd like to, I think their point was, they wanted to have a little more information, so if the neighbor came over and said, you're spending X amount of money on roads, what are we doing? So I don't think it's a big complicated thing, but I, I do think we might need a little bit more in there. Sorry, Sean.
No, that's okay. If I may, I would just want to address specifically that one item that you talked about, the Osprey Plant, which I think is what you're talking about. And there's a very specific reason why that is not on the chart. That is, we are upgrading the plant.
Right.
But we are not making it any larger. We are improving its nutrient treatment capacity. It will not be able to push more water through than what it currently does, but it will be able to significantly reduce the nitrogen and the phosphorus of the water that is now going through it. And because of that fact, it does not provide a higher level of service, and therefore, it isn't associated with growth. So that's why you won't necessarily see it on that chart.
But would it be appropriate to put it on that chart? Goals, objectives, our objective is to remove more nutrients for the water, correct? And therefore, would it be, I'm, I'm just asking.
We don't have a level of service standard for that. Our level of service standard is number of gallons per, and that's what this is intended to do, is reflect concurrency and level of service. So if, that's why he was talking about capacity, because that's a level of service standard.
Right.
And that's based on numbers of gallons that people consume per day or year, whatever standard we use. So what you're suggesting probably is to expand the reason that we have this. This is intended to consider a component that is increase in capacity of public facilities. Or, or, and when this talks about correcting existing public facilities, that's related to concurrency.
I think, I think a little more, I think with a little more explanation, Planning and Zoning would have been a lot happier. Sorry.
I'm used to not making people happy.
You good?
Starts at home, and then I bring it in.
I was gonna say, you've been married for years, though. But that was, I listened to Planning and Zoning, and that's what I got out of it, is they felt like if people started asking questions, they didn't have any answers.
And just as a reminder, I'll use Water Resources as an example. We have a consultant, and as we go through the budget process, all of the items that we are going to do in the budget year are listed in quite a lot of detail. And, you know, we, we do address the number of roads that we're going to pave, and we have a list of roads that we're going to evaluate and pave. So all the items in great detail are there, it's just not part of the CIE.
Would it, would, do you think it would have helped Planning and Zoning if they had had that information? Because I think that's what they're after. That's Peggy's question.
Yes, I do, that is what they're after. I think the question here is, this is the council's CIE, what do they want it to look like?
Okay, I would like some more information.
Member Stokel.
Thank you. If we were to amend the CIE, and we want to, and we submit it to the state, and we want it to make changes, something happens year three, what does that process look like?
We only submit this to the state every seven years.
So?
So this is, we do this because we are required to do it under an ordinance that we've adopted.
I guess my concern is, say we do submit it, and we do go into more detail, and then we want to make changes to it, is that possible?
Yes.
Okay.
The first, what the, there's some standards required related to the use of impact fees as it relates to CIE, and, but there is some flexibility allowed for local government.
Okay. And then I guess this would be for you, Sean. What would be your opinion on, I guess, going into more detail from an operational standpoint and having all those details for five years out? Do you think that that's feasible? Do you like it a little bit? I don't know, I, I see both sides. I don't like to lock myself, and necessarily, things can change. We didn't anticipate COVID happening, and we had to make adjustments there. But I also, to Member Nelson, or Vice Mayor Nelson's point, I understand the aspects of transparency, and the more information we can give in more documents would be beneficial.
From, from the Water Resources perspective, we go through a very detailed capital planning exercise every year as part of the rate study and as part of our budgeting process. So all the information is there, it's just, it's, it's just handled through the budget process rather than the CIE. I have, I've been part of the CIE for a number of years. I have seen it go from a very detailed report to a very small report over the last 12 years or so. And I think, you know, as Peggy mentioned, it's whatever we want to put in it, it sounds like it's our report, it's the city's report. I will say, the one thing I do want to address is that, you know, we do capital planning every year, and so it's bound to change every year, and that is very typical. Priorities change, the world changes in a year, we can have a hurricane, all kinds of things can happen, and that's why the numbers change, because we try to react to the current situation and then predict the best that we can the next five years out. I have probably 10 times more detail than anybody wants to see, and they're all public record. It's just how, how much do we want to embed in this activity versus going through our budget workshop and those, those planning processes where I present in pretty good detail what's coming up in the next five years.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then to that, I guess, I'm fine either way. I, I think we have the information out there, it's just a matter of how we want to make that information known to our citizens, so I'm okay either way.
Member Jordan.
Oh, thank you. I've been so patient over here. Thank you very much. But for the fact that we have to put this, send this report in, we wouldn't even be doing this report, correct? Is that a sane statement?
Well, it, it's part of the comprehensive plan requirements, so, but for the requirements of the comprehensive plan, each individual agency would have their own CIE, and it wouldn't be consolidated in one place.
The, the whole idea of doing this is because we have to turn this report in, but as I'm hearing staff talk about it, we've got the detail that is necessary for us to go forward with any capital improvements we want to do.
Yes, sir, I believe that's true. Yes, sir.
So I, what I don't like to see is, is us adding stuff to a report if it doesn't need to be in there, especially if we've already got it someplace else. My question actually is more deeper than that. It goes to Planning and Zoning because why?
Because they act as the state land planning agents, I mean, not the state, but the city's land planning agency, and our capital improvement element is required to have a recommendation from the land planning agency.
Okay, so we basically would, because Sean has said that we already have this information, we would basically be doing double work by adding it to another report. Is that a fair statement? Why are you looking at me like that? Am I mic on?
Yes, I would just be taking documents that I create during the budgeting process and embedding them in here, and then working out any conflicts between the two.
So my, my question is, is it necessary? Is it necessary for it to be in this report, too?
I think that's, to me, yeah, I think we're gonna do that.
It is, it is not necessary from the perspective of the minimum requirements for a CIE. It may be that this council feels that this should be expanded, in which case, there's nothing that says it can't be expanded, it's just additional work on the staff to compile that information, which is found in several other areas.
And then, of course, the other question is, how much information is enough information for transparency? Right?
Yes, sir, and I can't answer that.
I know, you can't. And that's, that's my challenge I have, because you can add some, and then you make it more common to say, that's not enough, it's not enough, it's not enough. And to me, we don't need to be making work, and that's, that's where I am. So if we have a requirement to turn a report in, we have the minimum requirements for that, I think the answer for P&amp;Z is for them to look at the other reports that we have there, they want to see detail about what we have in the report. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
That's where I am.
You good?
Yes, sir.
Again, play off of what you just said again. Did I hear that the information, the transparent information that P&amp;Z is concerned about not being there in this report is present in other reports and accessible?
Yes, I, I can provide great detail about the CIP planning that we have.
And again, Mayor, we, you know, the budget workshop that we go through in excruciating detail, 108 slides, that, that is the detail that we are in, and, you know, that's part of our budgeting process, which we are beginning in January next year, so it's a six-month process, it's transparent every step of the way, and then we arrive at the budget in September and execute in October. So the information is there, it's just not included in this, nor is it really necessary.
Well, we're meeting the standards of the state, we're meeting, you know, what we need to do. I don't want to see us get what I call paralysis with analysis, but I also don't want us to not have something that should be transparent. You did mention something earlier, and make sure I got this right, that I believe it was, in the report, you would say that we're doing the sidewalks. Perhaps you're going to say how many miles or feet or yards or whatever of sidewalks, but you don't necessarily say where the sidewalks are going. Is that correct?
Well, I can give you an example. It says that we're doing road resurfacing of 5.4 miles, and then sidewalk infill along collectors, and then sidewalk repair, there's nothing for FY '21, but there is for FY '22. But it, it just says a total amount of $100,000. So, and then it talks about the Marina Park Connection, which is beginning in FY '22, the Barna Trail, the US1 Gateway, bike lane improvements, Enchanted Forest Trail Connection, CRA and roadway improvements, resurfacing, and so there are some specifics, but apparently not, for instance, Sean mentioned water. It simply says meter replacements, telemetry upgrades, water system improvements, distribution system improvements, but it does not say the specifics.
I would say, and again, I could be totally off base here and out of my league, but as a facility AP with Brevard Public Schools for a decade, I never saw a report that said we're going to replace this many fields, or we're going to replace this many lockers, or whatever it may be, without saying where they were going to do it. Because in some cases, we'd like to have a little input to say, yeah, that's great, but where, where is this going? And, and that part does bother me, and that just comes back from my experience, and again, I'm, I'm probably way out of my league and didn't have the big deals you guys are doing, but I can only imagine if the district said we're going to put in, you know, two new stadiums, and guess where they're going? Nobody knows. You kind of got to know where they're going, why they're going, how they're going, and, and that's the big deal, because if we're saying we're going to pave, repave roads, and I know there's a list of when the roads come up, I know there is, but if we're going to say we're repaving 6.5 miles of road, which is what I tell our constituents all the time, because that is a big concern, they kind of want to know what roads. And that, to me, is not asking too much to say what roads, not just we're doing roads.
Mayor, could I ask for clarification?
Yep.
It appears from the notes and the agenda that there seems to be two issues. One seems to be members requested more transparency with the plan. The second is, staff's report should explain the reason the items are changing. So it seems to be, do we, they wanted, maybe if it's not in the plan, but does the report explain to P&amp;Z the changes in the report, so they understand the report? And then the second issue is, how much do you want to actually include in the report itself?
And that's probably why I, I don't use that word waffle, that's a weak word, but I don't want to say going back and forth, but I, I don't want to get paralysis with analysis. I, as Member Jordan said, I don't want to add more work that doesn't have to be there, but if it's work that should be there, then we've got to do what has to be done to get it there. But that's kind of the question. Does it have to be there, and who benefits from it being there? who benefits from it being there? For example, if the report goes and it says we're doing 5.5 miles of road, well, I know where to find what roads are going to be done, you've got a list of that. It may not be in that report, but I have a, a list of what roads are up next, obviously, as they've been rated. So, it's an interesting and difficult situation. And Vice Mayor Nelson?
May I? Understand that we don't want to do work unnecessarily, because God knows everybody has enough work. But when I look at the statute, it says, "The comprehensive plan shall," doesn't say maybe, it says "shall," "provide the principles, guidelines, stat- standards, and strategies for the orderly and balanced future economic, social, physical, environmental, and fiscal development of the area that reflects community commitments to implement the plan and its elements. These principles and strategies shall guide future decisions in a consistent manner and shall contain programs and activities to ensure comprehensive plans are implemented." So, to me, that means, sorry, I, you know how, you know how I do that, I mean.
I, I just wanted to let you know that this is not the comprehensive plan.
But isn't it part of it?
Yes, ma'am, but it is an appendix to the goals of policies that are in the capital improvement element. This is a capital improvement plan that is changed. Those policies that you want are in the element itself, and those change only with a laborious process. And they do describe how we are to meet our levels of service, et cetera.
So, is there a, how hard, let me ask it this, how hard would it be to put in, our goal is to replace the meters, X number of meters, we are doing X per year? I mean, I think that's what they're looking for.
I really don't think you want that in the capital improvements element. That you're talking about something that has to go to public hearings, then go to the state for their review, then come back, and two more public hearings.
No, we don't want to do that.
No, ma'am, you really don't. What you, what you really want in the comprehensive plan are large policies that give a general sense of direction. And then the specifics need to be ironed out through a different process.
So, this specific would be meter replacements, we want to upgrade our meters by X amount, by X amount, 2025?
Right.
And we have those goals and objectives already laid out.
That's correct. And so, what you're looking at is kind of an annual report card. How are we doing and meeting those? Because we have to know that, and we don't have a lot of concurrency issues in this part of the world, but there are many communities where they've got to figure out how they're going to have enough roads to put that next subdivision in. And so, they have to have this kind of long-term planning for those, just to meet the concurrency of the next one that comes in the door. And that was the intent. The Public Works and Water Resources have been doing these type of long-term planning forever. And they have gotten accustomed to doing it through a different process than the comprehensive plan. So, we just kind of take that and put it into a format that's required by the state.
So, let me make sure I understand, because I am periodically wrong. Not very often, but I heard that. So, in the comp plan, though, we would have all of what I'm, I'm asking for.
I doubt sincerely that we have all of what you're asking for. I do know that we put together the policies, the goals and objectives that talk about how we are going to deal with capital improvements. That includes levels of service, that includes the, the goals of, these are the things that we're concerned about. All of that is in the capital improvements element. If, if you want to table this, and we can provide you a copy of that element to review, we'd be happy to do that. As I said, there is no timeframe that a tabling will bump up against any, cause any problems. I just don't know if you want to hold this conversation twice. I don't think I do.
You never know. You never know. I would like to ta- table it and allow P and Z to get a little more, okay, Sean said I can provide you with 10 times the amount of this information. I really don't want to see 10 times that amount of information. But maybe two times?
Microphone, keep open.
No, you're off now. She had you turn it off.
I just turned it off. But maybe just a little more information? Do, do you understand a little more information?
Ma'am.
Okay. That would be my preference.
10 times, we want two times.
Yeah, two times.
All right. Member Stokel's up, and I'm, quite honestly, I'm looking to wind this down. We're going to make a decision one way or the other.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Kevin, for clarification. With, I know you have the list of streets that are coming up to be repaved, where are those currently at?
We have the list on the website, and it's already, it's actually going to be awarded at your next council meeting.
Okay.
The contract will be.
Should a citizen want to see that list, they can see it at any time?
Yeah.
Okay. So, from what I'm gathering from this, and we can table and come back, I think Peggy addressed that our overarching goals and objectives are in the comp plan. And I think the specifics that you're looking for are out there, it's just a matter of now bridging that together. So, we can work on that, I think. Yeah, we'll get there.
All right. I see no more lights, and I wanted to wind this down anyway, so I'm going to look for a motion of some sort.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the capital improvement element annual update.
I have a motion from Member Jordan. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
No.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
No.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes nine, C passes three to two.
And we're on to item nine D, which is a comprehensive plan CPA application number one dash two twenty, Titusville Mall transmittal. The applicant, Mr. Jesse Wright, on behalf of the property owner, Titusville Mall LLC, is requesting to amend the Titusville Comprehensive Plan and rezone the property located at 3550 South Washington Avenue to allow for the redevelopment of the Titusville Mall formerly known as the Seerstown Mall. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use map designation from commercial high intensity to urban mixed use, amend policy 1.11.15 of the future land use element to include a maximum floor area ratio and residential density, and rezone the property from regional commercial zoning district to urban village. The applicant also has included a master plan as required by the UV zoning district. The applicant is requesting transmittal of the comprehensive plan amendment to the State Land Planning Agency for their review. Based on the comments received from the LPA, the proposed amendments will be considered for adoption by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the City Council. At their meeting on December 2nd, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency unanimously recommended transmittal seven zero. Ms. Busaka's available for any information that you may have questions-wise, and I believe we will probably have a few cards on this one.
Yes. Ms. Busaka, any comments at this time?
I just wanted to explain the process. This is a submittal of a comprehensive plan amendment that does two things. It changes the future land use to show urban mixed use, and it adds some words to the future land use element that says that the Titusville Resort Destination will have an allowable maximum total non-residential intensity of 0.3 floor area ratio. And what that means is, if you have an acre and you have a total square footage on your, of your building, let's say it's five stories tall, but it's a, it's a tenth of an acre square foot, then it's got total half an acre of building square foot, so the floor area ratio is .5. That's the floor area ratio. And then it has a maximum total residential dwelling units of 15 units an acre. After these two are transmitted to the state, assuming that happens, the state will make comments, then it will come back to us. At that time, this will be put together with the master plan, and those things will all go back through the public hearing process. The city has adopted a plan called the US One Quarter Master Plan, and it calls out that there should be three areas which have urban mixed use and urban village zoning. Those areas are the Miracle City Mall site, which is now Titus Landing, the Riverwalk Village, which is essentially the property that used to be the, pardon me, the Monkey Jungle, or whatever they called that then, yes. I forget what they called it. You know, this is really getting to my bedtime, so.
Johnny Weiss Miller.
And then, the third one is the Titusville Resort and Destination. So, those three have been specifically called out in this plan for this land use and this zoning. I think the questions that probably have arisen is about regarding the master plan and whether that master plan is appropriate. I'd like to say two things about that. If you look on page 321 of your agenda, you will see the Miracle City Mall has an intensity of 0.3 FAR floor area ratio and a maximum total residential density of 15 dwelling units an acre. That's exactly what it is that Titusville Resort and Destination is asking for. If you'll notice, on Titus Landing, there are no residential units. So, sometimes the maximum intensity that is requested and shown in this comprehensive plan is not what is developed at the site itself. And any questions that you have this evening about the specifics of the master plan, I would suggest that while that's the most interesting, because these are just words and the master plan really shows you what the policy's going to be, that master plan has not been completely reviewed by the staff, and you haven't seen any of those comments. So, there's a long way to go in this process. And I thought maybe that would help you to understand that we're in step one of a multi-step process. I'm happy to answer any question.
Counsel, have any questions at this moment?
Yeah, just for clarification and probably just to echo what I'm, I'm hearing, we've got a long ways to go, for sure. And so, any pictures that you've seen that says this is what it's going to look like has no bearing on where we're going tonight. And that's just a submittal so that we can get comments back, right?
Yes, sir, that's right. But, as I said, that master plan is not on the agenda this evening, and has, you have not seen any staff comments about that. That is, that will happen later in the process.
So, anyone who comes to speak about the master plan tonight is really too premature to be talking about this since it's, we don't, you don't even have one.
Right. I really don't have a lot of specifics to answer questions about that master plan other than what you see. And the reason that it's provided this evening is because it's required under the comp plan and the code to provide a master plan when this transmittal occurs.
So, there is no rationale for us to even, even though the citizens can talk about it, there's no rationale for, in order for us to make a decision where we're going to send this on to the, to the state and offer their review. It, it doesn't do anything for us, because it's just the first portion of the review to get to maybe the master plan, where we'll get to the master plan.
Yes, sir. I, I would think that that was correct.
Okay. And the reason why I was saying that is because some of the emails that we get is talking about the density and all this stuff, and, you know, it's not enough drainage and all, all this good stuff. And this is really way premature as we're going through this process.
We're a very long way from any of those specifics, yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Member Stokel?
Thank you. Just to clarify on Member Jordan's point, we send this to the state for transmittal, they come back, give us comments, say they think everything's great, and we decide for some reason we don't like certain things, we can decide that at that time, correct?
Absolutely. The other option, of course, is that you can simply say that the zoning is okay, the future land use is okay, but you're not happy with the master plan, and you'd like to see some changes. At the master plan process, you have the right to deny, to approve, or to approve with conditions. So, there's still a, a lot of discussion to be had on this project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
To reclarify, we're simply voting on a transmittal.
That's correct.
And that's what I wanted to get out there. Before we say, call the cards, please.
Mayor, before you call the cards, I think we do need to acknowledge that there were emails sent.
Yes, Mayor, there were three emails submitted on this, Donna John, Kay Saint Ange, and William Klein. And then we have about eight cards, and we have one or two individuals representing the applicant. The person's Rodney Honeycutt.
Also to clarify, for the record, we got those emails. And name and address for the record.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. So, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the owner and the applicant for this project, which is to redevelop the old Titusville Mall, AKA the old Seerstown Mall. And so, Ms. Busaka very well described it, even though she's sleepy and ready to go home. And I, I don't think I need to go through that a lot. Our, our request is to transmit our land use change to urban village and the, and to amend the FAR. I will tell you a little bit, I've probably, you've looked at the master plan, but it does include a sports center, retail, at least enough and more to contain the existing retail uses, a hotel, restaurants, residential apartments, and assisted living. Also, the parking will be redeveloped, and there is no stormwater management or treatment on this site now, and there will be after this, is redeveloped. And the proposal is to redevelop it in stages. This allows existing tenants to remain while the project is also advancing. While we're, if it is transmitted to the state as we're requesting tonight, we'll be working with staff through the master plan. We submitted a master plan at this stage so that everybody could generally see what the plans were. And so, as we stated, we're requesting tonight that you transmit this to the state so we can get their comments and keep moving on this project. And I'd be glad to try to answer your questions.
Any questions?
Just one simple question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, absolutely. No, go to timeout, no.
I'd rather go to timeout, because I'm getting sleepy too, to tell you the truth. The, the whole phase of this thing, how long do you think it would take? Do you have any idea?
No, I really don't.
Okay, all right, that's it.
It's, it's a large project.
Yes, it is, I know. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. Honeycutt, did you receive copies of the emails that were provided to council?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you.
Can we call the other cards?
Yes, sir. I believe this person is also here on behalf of the application, Lisa McCotter.
Hi, Lisa McCotter, Country Club Drive, Titusville. I am speaking on behalf of Jesse Wright, who of course lives out of state. So, I won't go into too much detail, but just kind of to give a little history on the purchase of the mall, and shortly after the mall was purchased, the biggest anchor on US One Sears, of course, filed bankruptcy and, and they left. And so, this is a very old building that dates back to the Apollo days, and it's, although we have tried our best over the past few years, there are problems. So, this is, Mr. Wright believes a better use of the property, and from a citizen's point of view, I believe it's a better use of the property, more modern and updated. and updated, not just in the physical building, but also urban village, just to have shopping and entertainment where you live. And so I know more details will come later, but I hope that you will pass this on to the next step. Thank you.
Questions? No questions, thank you. Next card.
Yes, sir. Anita Dukes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Anita Dukes, Orlando, Florida. I am the current Titusville Mall General Manager. I'm here tonight just to ask you to please pass the transmittal along. I know we're not talking about the master plan, but it is very exciting. And because Titusville is growing, as we all can see, Blue Origin, lots of things going on here, we need to grow with them in retail and in our multifamily, which is exactly what we're trying to do. And the urban village, I think, fits right into that plan and that's where we're trying to go with this. And we, I just want to ask you all to please let it be submitted to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and we're anticipating maybe five years, three phases.
Next card, please.
Mike Nickel.
Hi, Mike Nickel, Maitland, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the client, my client. I'm with Kwahachi and Peterson Architects. I am the design professional who put together the site plan that was then turned into the master plan. And I'm really here to just answer any questions that the council may have regarding the future land use as we've established it.
Counsel, any questions? No, but we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So we have none, sorry. And next card.
Kim Hassel.
Hello, I'm Kim Hassel and I live at 237 Narves Drive. My home is 40 steps from the mall. I know that because I walked in today. And I just wanted to figure out how far it exactly was because I looked at this map that I received and I got some paperwork, you know, from the people that are trying to build. And I might be here too early, but I do have concerns about the map that I got, might not be correct exactly what they're going to do. But from the scale that I look at, it looks like there's going to be entrance and exit ways, like right in front of my home, where my car pulls out of my driveway. I'll be having cars pulling out of this mall. It also looks like I'll be living right directly 40 steps away from a sports complex, which I have boys, I've raised kids, I've lived here 41 years of my life. These kids need something to do and I'm all for it, but not 40 steps from my front door. Even when my kids were young, I'd love to have them go somewhere, but not, like I said, right out the front door, here you go, kids, bye.
Guys need to go further away.
So that's my main concern, like, you know, I live right there, like it's right outside my front door. Now, you know, the thing is, the city puts speed humps on that street because obviously you just don't do it because people complain, there's a lot of traffic. I can hear them scratching over it from inside my house. So you're talking about this now is going to create more traffic. And I just would please ask the city to please make sure that they are not putting entrance and exit ways to this property that's going to be built on the street. There's an entrance and exit way on the end of each road that goes into there, and I'd like to see that stay that way. Also, like the noise level, putting these buildings and these, you know, multi-story homes, you're having like multi-story buildings, apartments, and parking garage was one thing, but like apartments, you have privacy fences in your own home, but now you've purchased your home and now you're going to have somebody on the third floor looking out the bedroom windows, seeing what you're doing in your own backyard. I just would like to see that it stays, you know, single level. I'm all for building apartments, 55 and over, great, community, great, but please, single level, no multi-story buildings right across from where we live. I wasn't really planning for this, but I guess. And another thing I'd like to know is like the noise level, like would they be building a wall? Because we do have like two dilapidated walls there that are crumbling down with the building itself. Will they be building a wall? And if so, how high to keep that noise from coming to us? And also the demolition hours, once they start tearing that building down, is it going to be from eight to five or is it going to be all night long with bright lights shining, you know, in our windows? We're trying to get up and go to work, can't get no sleep because they're doing demolition here. It's a residential area and we're just trying to keep it quiet and safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More cards?
Yes, sir. Two more. Carrie Chambers.
Hello, Carrie Chambers, Chesterfield Court in Titusville. I'm here to speak on my behalf and then also I have a letter from an elderly, an elderly neighbor that lives on Narves Drive as well. If I could read their concerns, they weren't able to come because of their health. Is that okay?
Yeah, could you hand that to the clerk, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Like I said, I live on Chesterfield Court, which is not near the mall, but Kim is my sister and we're there an awful lot. I have an eight-year-old daughter. They play out in the yard a lot with her grandson, which is my great nephew. And the kids right now, we have, like she said, a lot of traffic that comes through there. There's speed humps and the people are dukes a-hazarding over the speed humps. Okay, I went to court and testified last year in a court case because I was almost run over by a guy speeding down that street in her yard. I wasn't in the street, I was in her yard by the mailbox and almost hit by somebody with a car. So having exits and entrances going on her, that residential street is a great concern. Also the privacy and the safety of the children, like she said, with having multi-levels and people can be standing on their floor above yours and looking over into your backyard when the kids are in the pool or whatever they're doing. Just privacy is a concern for the residents and the safety, very much so. And that's it.
Okay, any questions?
Mayor, can I suggest, if she wanted, I think she wanted to read that letter to you.
Oh, do you want to read that letter? Oh, certainly you may. I'm sorry, I thought that we would get a copy of that. That's fine, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. And then if you could submit it, we could have that for our file.
Okay, sure, thank you. This letter was written by Michael M. Margaret Lecran, Lecronc, I apologize if I mispronounced her name, L O N C A R I C, at 273 Narves Drive. They apologize they couldn't come to the meeting in person because of their health issues, but to her may concern, this is their voice, and I'm just going to read it as they wrote it.
Certainly.
We live on Narves Drive, we are senior citizens, we strongly oppose. As residents, we have an opinion and can address to the city and as to why we oppose to this. Our concerns are, number one, putting exits and entrances on Narves. Number two, more and too much noise because of our health issues, and let's not forget our pet concerns. Three, privacy, need to stop strangers from looking into our homes. Four, too much traffic. Five, more crime, and it's a major concern. With all these projects going on, we won't have security for our items outside on our property. Then they say they strongly suggest they put their projects somewhere else in the city. There's lots of other places available, but not in a residential area. Please leave our Seerstown Mall alone. Make it affordable for the tenants to do business and businesses in Titusville that the residents can afford and necessities we need. Can't, sorry?
How much do you have to go?
Just a couple sentences.
Can we let her finish that line, please? Please do.
So they say can't see the need or the purpose of this project in our area. Thank you for listening to us. And they list their phone numbers. And that was Michael M. Margaret.
Very well done, thank you. And if we can now get it to the clerk, we can have that in our file. Thank you so much. And is there one more card?
Yes, sir. Boyce Archie.
Boyce Archie, 255 Narves. And clerk and counsel and Mr. Mayor, thanks very much. I've got some questions. I'm sure you've heard them all before. These are rather elementary questions, but nevertheless, they probably should be addressed at some point, if not now, when? That's what I'd like to know. Are these construction people going to have insurance in case there's any sort of damage on people's lawns or property or homes? And this, is there going to be any sort of barriers, natural or man-made? Because I think that's extremely important for people to realize that, well, the city really does, or the construction people really do think that they're, that they want to be a good neighbor. And do you think there will be any electric or water interruptions at times? And, you know, these dump trucks that they're going to have, there's going to be millions of pounds of bricks, they're going to be running up and down Narves. I don't know, I wish they would be designated to go a different area because these trucks can be very damaging to the roads, too. And just one other thing. Okay, Barry. Nobody seems to know really how long this is going to take, but it seems to me that that's just an elementary thing. They have to state in their, in their, in their asking the council how long this is going to go on. And what I'd like to really ask tonight is, everybody's going to be concerned about property values. And having said that, I would like to see some sort of projection on property values, what the property values would be, one year, two years, maybe four, five years out. Because instead of, instead of council members saying, well, don't worry about it, this is all going to be all taken care of, nothing's going to be a problem, we'd like to see something in writing. I think that's an easy thing to do, I don't think it's a hard thing to do. And then you can always refer to, well, we already did that and this is what it's going to be for your information. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No questions, no more cards? Thank you. All right, I want to just reiterate again and to some of the concerns over there that, you know, there's some questions here and I can appreciate those questions, but we're simply, as Member Jordan noted when we got started, we're in the very early transmittal stages. This is just a matter of voting to, are we going to transmit this to the state and get their feedback? And with that said, I don't see any, Member Jordan?
Yeah, I just want to make the motion.
Okay, good. Go ahead then, Member Jordan. Motion on the...
Okay, all right. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve the comprehensive plan, Amendment CPA Application Number One, there's 2020, Titusville Mall being transmitted.
Second.
We have a, Member Jordan with the motion, Vice Mayor with the second real call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion to transmit has been approved unanimously. We move on to the next one.
Excuse me, if I could just say one thing. I want the people in the audience to know that the next step of the process, they will also be notified for any future public meetings. So it's, this isn't the only notice they will get.
And we've been through this transmittal before, obviously, and remind me, about how long does that take?
Well, this is a large-scale amendment, so it will take several months. So I would not expect to see any public hearings for three or four months. Maybe not even that soon, but it will be at least three or four months.
And as you noted, they'd be informed.
They will indeed. They'll receive courtesy notices as they did for this meeting.
Thank you for bringing that to the forefront and thank you guys. We move on to the next one.
I'm sorry, we're having technical issues here, I'm sorry. I'm catching up.
You're messing with me. Think we're doing good and all of a sudden it's like, did I go brain down? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, good.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to read the quasi-judicial rules of procedure. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located at the table on the side of the council chambers. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, such other representatives as authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card?
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding the quasi-judicial item to be reviewed?
No.
Thank you. And also, any written communications that have been received must be made a part of the record.
And on to conditional use permit, application 3-220, Mobile Temporary Cell on Wheels, which is, will be referred to as a COW, transmission tower located at 155 South Daleon Avenue. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the placement of a temporary 100-foot-tall cellular on wheels transmission tower with accessory equipment to be located at 155 South Daleon Avenue. The property is zoned light industrial services and warehousing M1. The CUP requested is for a portion of the site to be leased. The COW will provide continuity of services to a portion of the city that's currently served by T-Mobile on the city-owned water tower that's scheduled for demolition. T-Mobile is moving forward to obtain the permit of this tower site. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on December 2nd, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions as recommended by staff 7-0.
Staff, have any comments on this?
I just have a brief report. First of all, this is a temporary use and we, under the code, don't have specific conditions for a temporary use, so we've asked them to, we've put some conditions as recommendations, but the review of this actually is consistent with the requirements of the conditional use permit based on the staff analysis. It is contiguous with the existing land use, industrial land use patterns within the surrounding area. We will not require specific buffering and screening measures because there would be, because this is a temporary use, but we, the plan does include a temporary chain link fence to secure the equipment. Staff didn't feel that putting up some kind of permanent landscaping made sense for a temporary use. The staff doesn't anticipate nuisance issues related to odor, smoke, glare, and electrical interference, and we have several conditions. The first is that the use will expire two years from the date of issuance of the first business tax receipt unless otherwise extended. The second is that the administrator may grant one extension up to one year with a written basis as long as there has been demonstrated that there is not an unreasonable nuisance. And the third is that, let me get, make sure I've got this in front of me. The third is that any modifications of approved plans or conditions of approval shall require a new application submitted and reviewed in accordance with this, so that you would be seeing that again. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Yes, sir.
Yes. What is the nearest distance from the, the nearest residence from where this is going to be located?
I am, that may take a moment.
Okay, because that's important. I know that there is some, sometimes some concern about the nearness of these towers and tenants to residents, so we want to make sure that is addressed in the issue.
If you will look at the map on page 364, there's an aerial map.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. The zoning is an urban mixed-use district. And in this area, the land use is industrial on all sides. So if there is a... on all sides, so if there is a residence in there, it would be inconsistent with that industrial zoning. I don't have the specifics based on the aerial photograph. It looks like the only possibility for residential site would be on the other side of Main Street, to the south. But we do have a representative of the applicant here, and they may know more than I do.
Okay. Representative for the applicant, would you like to answer that question, or do you have an answer to that question?
Good evening, I'm Matt Sinai-John, 935 Main Street, Suite D1, Safety Harbor, Florida, 34695. I have filled out a speaker's card. I apologize, but I do not have a specific answer for you, because no residential uses were identified within proximity to the tower. Generally, if one is identified in some type of a proximity or in some type of a code, or in proximity to a code-required separation as well, we would put that on the plan, so that way you have that information available for your decision.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions while, just here? No? Anything else you wanna say, you have a card filled out?
Yes. Again, I'm Matt Sinai-John. I had a full presentation prepared for you with PowerPoint, which is up on the screen. In the interest of time, I will spare you that presentation, but it is all there. It's all, should also be in your record. This is the same PowerPoint that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As you heard, I come before you today with staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations of approval for conditional use allowing a temporary 102-foot-tall sell-on-wheels COW-style communication tower at 155 South DeLeon Avenue. As you heard, this is just here for continuity coverage. It's meant to be used for a short period of time. T-Mobile's hoping five to six months, there is a two-year window, just in case things take longer. I have the application for the permanent site on my desk, and I'm working on it at this time, so that way this use will be minimized as much as possible. And again, this is providing continuity for the water tank that is coming down. We are agreeable to staff's proposed conditions of approval. We join them in those conditions and would respectfully request that you approve the conditional use as, as depicted in the staff report with their proposed conditions of approval. With that, I'm available for any questions that you may have, and I know that I have rebuttal time allocated towards me, but I also reserve any remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you.
No questions?
I didn't have a question, but I-
I know, I'm gonna get you, like, okay, you go ahead, sit down.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry. Member Robinson, this is, if you look where the subject property is, that's actually a garage. I know, because my, my dad used to visit that garage on a regular basis.
Wow.
The area across the street used to be a steep, what is it, Seabright Stainless Steel.
It used to be a home, a home strike, didn't it, somewhere?
Yeah, and then across the street where it says 279, actually belongs to Gordon, who owns that garage, but next to it was the old city garage. So I haven't seen any houses around there in ages.
And I'm not arguing with you.
I, I didn't ride over there to see, because I've lived in there, and I just wanted to make sure that we did that.
Yes, I did not ride over there to look at the site. I know where, where it is, but I wanna make sure that, that that has been taken in as a consideration as we move forward with it.
Very good, thank you. Are any other cards?
Uh, yes, sir.
Any more comment from counsel? Question? Member Jordan?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Before I go further, anything else, Ms. Busaka? Okay, Member Jordan on the motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to move that we approve the conditional use permit, Application 3-2020 T-Mobile Temporary Sell on Wheels Transmission Tower at 155 South DeLeon Avenue with staff conditions.
I have a motion.
I have a second.
And I have a second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
And Mayor, on to Item F, the dreaded blue screen computer has been repaired. Item F is Request to Vacate an Easement, Application Number 4-220, Location of 4562 Helena Avenue. The petition has been received from Robert Fentress, the owner, to vacate a portion of 7.50-foot public utility and drainage easement that abuts the western and southern boundary of the subject property. The applicant is proposing to install a five-foot-tall retaining wall. The wall will protect from erosion in the elevation, elevated adjacent, from the elevated adjacent property. Comments have been received from all application utility providers with concerns expressed. Staff recommends approval of this easement to vacate.
I have only one comment, and that is the typo that the report, this should say with no concerns. We've received letters, and there are no concerns from utilities.
Okay, no concerns, very good. Any questions for Ms. Busaka from the council? Any cards?
Uh, yes, sir, the applicant, Roger Fentress.
And name an address for the record, please.
My name is Roger Fentress, and I am the resident of 5462 Helena Drive, and I would like to thank you folks for considering this request, but what I'm trying to do is, when the subdivision was built, they did not take a mound out of it between my house and the house next door. And the house next door, his backyard is approximately five-foot elevation different than mine. And when they built his house, his was the second house built, and mine was probably fifth or sixth. So when they come in to take part of that mound out to build my house, they put up retaining block wall up there. There was no adhesives put in those blocks, there was no footer put on that, and over the 30 years, this has started to come down. I've got blocks that have fell out of that wall, and even though it's only five foot, I think it's a hazard to myself and my wife, plus the fence, the yard next door. But there's probably about six places where there's eight to 10 inches of his yard that is washed under the fence. And I have spoken with him, and he is all for it. He said, "I'll even get out there and help you." He said, "Whatever it takes, we need to get that wall up there to protect my yard and your yard as well." And I would like to take this time to thank you folks for appreciating, yes, listening to me.
Well, thank you so much. Sounds like you did a lot of work. Okay, counsel, any more cards? Okay, counsel, any questions? None? Staff, anything more? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request to vacate an easement, Application Number 4-2020 4562 Helena Drive.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Member Stokel. Let's have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
All right, we move on.
Passes unanimously. We go on to Item G, which is a request to vacate a right-of-way, Application Number 3-2020 in Huntington Park. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered their request at their November 18th, 2020 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval with conditions as stated by staff. The applicant, Richard Fidel, on behalf of the owner, Holiday Builders Incorporated, is requesting a right-of-way vacation to vacate a portion of a 20-foot unapproved road right-of-way which bisects the owner's property. The property is located west of the intersection of South Park Avenue and Tree Top Drive. The subject, the subject public right-of-way was recorded as part of the Titusville Fruit and Farm Company plat back in 1914, which is proposed to be replatted with the adoption of the Huntington Park plat. There are no objections to the request for the utility, any, from any utility providers and city public works departments, and the conditions are part of your packet.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Busaka. Counsel, any questions? No questions? Any cards on this issue?
Uh, yes, sir, Bruce Moya.
Okay, let's have the-
I believe he is here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bruce Moya, representing the applicant with MBV Engineering at 1250 West O'Gally Boulevard in Melbourne. We're fine with everything, we're happy with staff's comments, we thank staff for their time in helping us get this to you, and I'm really just here for any questions, so I don't really have a presentation.
Very good, thank you for being here. Do we have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
I see no questions. Again, I see no questions, that moves me to, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Are we good? Okay.
Can I go?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request to vacate right-of-way, Application Number 3-2020 Huntington Park.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Roll call vote.
Wait, is that with the conditions?
With conditions, yes. I'm sorry, did I fail to see that?
Forgot.
Yeah, I'm saying, we had a little cross over there, you're hitting it, I'm saying yes. Okay, now we have a roll call vote.
Thank you. To, uh, Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
On to ordinances, first readings, Item 10A, this is ordinance number 1-2021 regarding on-street parking. This is the first reading, and on November 18th, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the proposed ordinance and voted unanimously to recommend approval as written. And again, this is your first reading, so the attorney will read the ordinance.
Any first reading, no action required, we move to?
I need to read the ordinance.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Ordinance Number 1, 2021, An Ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, Amending the Code of Ordinances by Amending Chapter 30 Development Standards, Section 30-283 On-Street Parking Credit, To amend the areas where on-street parking may count toward required parking, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances in Effective Date and Incorporation into the Code.
Wanna do it again? We're moving fast, then we're moving slow. Okay, so no action required?
That's correct.
Okay, yes, sir, moving on.
Okay, no old business, which is Item 11, we are now on new business, Item 12A, Advisibility to Approve in Concept of a Sanitary Sewer Infrastructure Project and Utilization of the City's North Provence Economic Development Zone TIF Funding. Trimcore Construction of Florida LLC has requested assistance from the City of Titusville and the North Provence Economic Development Zone for the installation of a new sanitary sewer line along approximately three-mile section of US-1 from SR, State Route 50 to State Route 405. A private consortium composed of developers that have a common interest in undertaking the sizable commercial projects along this portion of US-1 corridor will provide the design and installation of the new sewer line with an understanding that the North Provence Economic Development Zone will reimburse the consortium for certain costs incurred for the project using the city's TIF. At the regular meeting on November 13th, 2020, the North Provence Economic Development Zone Board of Directors approved the project in concept. The estimated project cost is $2.2 million. According to the North Provence Economic Development Zone SAF, the city's TIF budget for the current year is $1.1 million 508,516. Although that amount is insufficient to cover the cost of the sanitary improvements, the city's contribution to the North Provence Economic Development Zone TIF are anticipated to be $500,000 per year for the next three years. With the timeline for the installation of the new line at roughly 20 to 24 months, it's anticipated the city's final reimbursement would not be until FY '22 to '23. A copy of the FY '20 to '21 North Provence Economic Development Zone is attached. In addition to contributing substantially to the public good by ensuring continued public health and safety, this project is necessary for a variety of reasons. The absence of a sanitary sewer line at this section of US-1 has especially, has essentially precluded any expansion, commercial, it's getting me a long evening, expansion in this area, including the development of a hotel, conference center, and several other prospective projects. The completion of the installation of this sewer line will enable these and future commercial developments to, to proceed. The availability of a sewer system serves as a fundamental inducement to businesses when they're engaged in site selection activities to locate a new expanding business. Constructing a sewer system infrastructure results in job creation, stimulates investment from the private sector, and increases an enhanced community tax base. The sanitary sewer system infrastructure promotes and contributes to every, every type of development, including residential, commercial, industrial, and retail restaurant. Staff requests advisability concerning the approval in concept of a sewer system design, installation, project, and utilization of the city's portion of the North Provence Economic Development Zone's tax increment funding TIF funds in the amount not to exceed $2.5 million. In order to approve advisability to use TIF funds, council should make the finding that this project is in the public interest. If city council advises approval of the project in concept, and we use the city's TIF funding, an interlocal agreement between the North Provence Board of County Commissioners, the City of Titusville, and the consortium will be drafted and brought back to you at a later time. Mr. Post is available, and we also have our Water Resources Director, Sean Stauffer, here, should you have any questions regarding the sanitary sewer system.
Very good. Assuming you have a presentation for us.
Well, I do, but that was very comprehensive, so I should probably just ask you if you have any questions. All right, we could go through it, it's about 12 slides, if you'd like, but it does cover many of the same things that you do. I'll just tell you real quickly, on the PowerPoint, what I did try to show was the extent of the project, which is about a three-mile-long area from State Road 50, going all the way down to State Road 405, the NASA causeway. It takes into account an area of the city that currently does not have any sewer, but it also takes into account an area that does have sewer, but has sewer that is essentially at capacity, if I can use that language. I know Sean probably has better language, being the utility manager. But the problem is that, given the current state of that section of the sewer, we cannot accommodate any additional development on it. That means the existing businesses cannot do anything further to expand, and we can't add any new developments on there. So you've got an area that's essentially in the city, of the center of the city, that cannot accommodate any further commercial development. And we have a number of projects that are considering being in this area, and some of those are highlighted on the PowerPoint, which are also then taken into account with the economic impact analysis that you have in front of you, which shows that if we are able to tackle this problem, we can accommodate well over 1,000 construction jobs, have probably 386 permanent jobs, those are direct jobs, not including the induced and indirect jobs which are in the report, and have a capital expenditure expected from different projects of over 100 million. So it's a great economic development project. Question was at one of our last board meetings with the zone, you know, is this something that we could do? And a lot of tax increment financing districts do these kinds of infrastructure activities. They work on road improvements, they work on utility improvements. Our zone is a little bit more unique in the state of Florida, we've done a lot of assistance directly to businesses, but we can also do these kinds of things, too. And a section of the plan that was approved by this city council many years ago allows us to take on these strategic initiatives and build public-private partnerships to accomplish this very task. We actually have in the audience, Justin Trimback, he's the developer. He owns one of the lots that right now cannot be, cannot accommodate any further growth because they do not have that sewer. He's willing to take on the risk to try to do this sewer line installation, as long as there is a financial assistance tool that can be used to reimburse his costs. The timeline for doing all this is about 20 to 24 months, so this is not a quick project. It will involve having to spend some time to prepare the necessary engineering plans, go to the different regulatory bodies, get approval before you can even get started. So we're fortunate to have a developer that's willing to take this on and do it for us to really kind of enhance that whole corridor there on US-1. So I'll stop and see if you have any additional questions.
And I don't think this is a question- And I don't think this is a question, but I kind of want to set the table for myself in that I think that this is a natural right step for our city, for our public, for our citizens. So this project would totally be the benefit to our public, to our city, and to our citizens. It's the natural right thing to do next because that's the area we want to develop next. That's really the only area we have left to develop next. And to give a little emphasis to that, we don't have a strategic plan meeting where we don't have the fire chief talk to us about the fact that we're going to need a fire station to the south for response time. So I think it's all on the table. We know it's coming. But to leave that key part of infrastructure out would be a mistake on our part. And I do think it absolutely meets every standard that benefits the public in this case. I thought it started off that way. Vice Mayor Nelson?
I agree with the mayor. I mean, this is something that's needed. We need to clean the river up. It'll help that.
That's true.
Help provide a lot of different benefits to the city. What I am concerned about is, I understand we're on hook to them all, correct? And so I want to make sure that we don't get too far out.
Yeah, that's a good point to raise. Now, we do look at our cash flow periodically, just to make sure that with the incentives that we are pledging, that we have sufficient revenue coming in. All the revenues that we get are avalorem tax revenues. We get an allocation from the city. We also get an allocation from the county. The county's portion, historically for us with the zone, has been the larger contributor to our revenue source. That continues to be approximately 2.7, 2.8 million annually. And we have relied upon that to service that bond debt to the City of Titusville to do the Titus Landing. We do have some big incentives, though, out there. We do have the incentive that we have with Blue Origin. We've been paying off that incentive and still have two more years under that window. So about the time that this project should be completed, we won't owe any additional incentive dollars to Blue Origin, so we have that money that can then be used. But really, the other nice thing about something like this, it feeds into the formula of helping to kind of grow our revenue stream because if we put the sewer line in out there and these developments come to fruition, then the zone, along with the city and the county, will realize even greater tax revenue because of the increased property valuation. So it really does kind of help us be in a much better cash flow position in the future.
I would agree with you. I would just say, as we're going through this process, we need to be cognizant of that and make sure that the city's not too far out there.
I agree.
Yeah, and we can bring back at the next meeting, where we actually bring the interlocal back. We can show you an example of the cash flow statement on the zone.
Okay.
Member Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, for sure. You know, I'm one of your biggest fans, for sure. And in my mind, this is... I totally agree with what the mayor and vice mayor said to make sure that we don't put ourselves out too far. But I'm looking at your last chart that you have on here. When you're talking about basically investing two and a half million dollars, but the return on that investment is six hundred jobs, eight hundred, eighty-one millions in sales and forty-four million in personal income for this area, that says a great deal. I mean, we would be very foolish to do it. And of course, we all know that we don't generally build infrastructure for future use, thinking it's going to happen. So I think it's a win-win to have a partnership, you know, with private investor and to make sure, you know, they're putting a lot on the line to do something like that. We have to realize that. But they're actually helping us a great deal, for sure. And I think we need to make sure that they understand that we're going to be their strong partners to make sure all these governmental requirements and all this stuff that could get in the way for progress, that we're going to be there to help them along the way to make sure that happens, for sure. So I applaud you coming up with something like this. I applaud the developer for even thinking about doing something like this, for sure. I know it's a great deal, but you are helping out all the citizens of North Pervard, for sure. And we certainly appreciate that. So I look forward to us going forward with this and doing the right thing for our citizens.
Okay, you good?
You may stop.
No, you can keep going. All right, then. Past your bedtime. Anything else?
No, sir, I don't know.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other cards? Any cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that in mind, I think we're... Okay, I see you're getting ready to fire me.
Yes, sir.
I think we're ready for a motion. Member Jordan?
I am getting sleepy. Yes, I move that we approve, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the visability approval in the concept of a sanitary sewer infrastructure project and utilization of city's North Pervard Economic Development Zone's TIF funding.
I have a motion on the advisability from Member Jordan.
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Nelson. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion, advisability passes unanimously.
Yes, sir. Next item, before we get to item twelve B, Member Jordan, this city attorney felt a little bit slighted that you said that Troy was your favorite. So, you know, I'm...
I should apologize.
Yeah, I apologize for that. You're one of my favorites.
I did note his head go down when you said that, so... As we proceed, you may be able to weave something in later this evening to help prop him up a little bit. Onto twelve B. Earlier this evening, the CRA recommended approval of a memorandum of agreement between the City of Titusville, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Merritt Island Wildlife Association regarding the Merritt Island Wildlife Association temporary utilization of space in the Downtown Welcome Center. SAF is recommending that you approve this MOU.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? I keep looking at Ms. Busaka, but she's so far in the way in the corner now, I might as well not even talk to her. Any cards on this?
No, sir.
Counsel, any comment? I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement, City of Titusville, the Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Merritt Island Wildlife Association regarding the use of the Downtown Welcome Center.
I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Approved unanimously. We move to C.
Onto twelve C, the Verona subdivision sketch plat replat. At their meeting on December second, twenty twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six one. The member that voted against this item did not believe the applicant indicated their intent to Saint John's River Management District, and the city should not reward filling in of wetlands. One member that voted in support recommended that the applicant incorporate a pocket park and trail adjacent to future parts and trails. The Willow Creek site was annexed into the city under ordinance number forty-two, two thousand and one, has a mixed residential community of approximately 672 acres in size. The project consisted of six villages with a mix of cottage homes, estate homes, duplexes, and townhouses. The total number of units was not to exceed 1,277 units. The site was rezoned to a mixture of single-family home, medium-density R1B, and open-space recreation OR by ordinance twenty-six, two thousand and two, adopted on June eleventh, two thousand and two. The subject area was known as Willow Creek Phase One. The area was rezoned from multifamily, medium-density residential R2 zoning district to single-family, high-density R1C by ordinance six, two thousand and sixteen, on April twelfth, twenty sixteen. The Willow Creek Phase One plat, now renamed Verona, for a total of sixty-one single-family residential lots and common area, was approved and accepted by city council on June ninth, twenty twenty. The plat, currently known as Verona, was approved with several common area tracks, specifically tracks I, J, and V. A small-scale amendment was proposed by city council on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, which designated several irregular-shaped areas totaling 4.5 acres from its current conservation future land use, or OR zoning, to medium-density residential future land use and R1C zoning. This approval was also allowed the property owner to apply for an amendment to the existing plat by converting tracks I, J, and V from common areas to eighteen additional single-family residential lots. The stormwater plan that was accepted in Phase One to stand on its own shall be upgraded to include an additional area being incorporated by the new plan. Pursuant to Section thirty-four, one fifty-two, requires submittals and exhibits and development review procedures manual eleven point one. And the following information was required by the submittal of the sketch plat to the city. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have, and I believe the applicant is present as well.
I see Ms. Busaka move forward, which means that we can say, Ms. Busaka, do you have any comment or question?
I was just going to say that the requirements, the total requirements for sketch plat are provided on page four seventy-five and four seventy-six of your agenda item. And the staff has denoted each area where that requirement is met.
Very good. Applicant, would you like to speak at this time?
Certainly. Thank you. Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
And so tonight, we're just asking for the sketch plat approval to convert the tracks to lots. I think we went through the rezoning a few weeks ago, October or something like that. And so that's what we're here to request tonight, the sketch plat. We still have to come back with a final plat.
And thank you. Are there any questions? I see no buttons. Thank you, sir. We are... No questions to the staff? No questions to Rodney? We have a motion?
Well, one question.
I'm sorry.
The one opposing individual is about the fact that the additional homes, the eighteen additional homes, and taking up other land space, is that the concern?
The individual who voted against it had voted against the rezoning. And so to be consistent, she believed that she felt that she should vote against this as well. The specific, I can read from the minutes, and it says, "Member Parish voted no because the developer should not have been awarded additional lots when they destroyed wetlands." That's the minutes, the draft minutes of the P and Z meeting.
Are you guys fine? Member Jordan?
I thought her cast something to you raising her hand for some reason.
Thank you, sirs. I wanted to make sure that you knew emails were submitted prior to the meeting from Casey Ange and William Klein.
Correct, and thank you for saying that, getting that on the record. Thank you. Yes, we do have that.
And Ms. Honeycutt, did you receive those as well?
Every council member has that? Yes, very good. Okay, now, Member Jordan?
Okay. Mayor Diesel?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
I almost forgot his name.
It's only midnight.
It's everybody's bedtime.
Move that we approve the sketch plat for the replat of Verona subdivision Phase One.
I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Nelson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimously, we move on.
Sir, where are the petitions and requests from the public present?
Anybody... Rodney, anything you want to say? Sir? Nothing? We're good. No petitions and requests at this time.
Next item is Mayor and Council reports.
Counsel, Member Jordan?
Yes, sir. I only have one. Just, well, actually, two. Certainly want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Looking forward to a little break from all of this wonderful stuff we do. But it came to my attention when I was reviewing the agenda for this meeting that when we're looking at the boards and adjustments, one of the things that always bothered me is some of these boards that we have, even though we're the ones that actually pick the person who's going to be on there, if there's something that comes up and there needs to be a recourse, then we should, as council members, should have a say-so in what the next step should be. And this came up as far as the board of adjustments. They don't meet, but I think once a month, as it is. But I would like if the council would agree to allow city staff to look at the board of adjustment process and specifically look at public and private process and see if there is any adjustments that we need to make. Because I think what occurs, if they make a decision, and I've gone through this process, which I didn't agree with some of the stuff, and I ended up having to spend some money on this thing, there was no recourse except to go to court, and I'm definitely not going to do that. So I would ask that we ask staff for advisability to look at public versus private process and also provide some kind of advisory on the appeals process. That's acceptable.
City Manager?
Yes, sir. It would be an advisability. We will come back to you, should we get a consensus from council to take a look at the BAA and make recommendations at your first meeting in January based on Councilmember Jordan's observations.
And I would add to that, that I would like to see some way... I'm not sure what all the protocol is on that, but some way where an elected official has some say in there somewhere at some step. And it doesn't seem as though that once, if there's an appeal or anything like that, it goes straight to court. And I'm not sure we have a lot to do with that. However, I also want to add that what I don't want to see happen is that we get a whole new job with twenty-seven of these every, you know, every meeting. So there's got to be a happy middle, that we can have some say. On the other hand, I don't want every single issue to come before me.
And I think with, what I heard Councilmember Jordan say was with public interest, public property, those would be an example of something like a... I'll use a lift station as an example. Some of the landscaping requirements, some of the fencing requirements that our code currently has would be not appropriate for a lift station because it's an operational piece of equipment that we need to get to and observe and look through. So we currently would have to go to BAA and request waivers for these sorts of things. So things that are in the public interest and public property, public projects, we may be able to take a look at those being a different process than the current BAA, which I think is what you're saying.
All right.
So if I could... I hear two, but is there a consensus from the remaining members that we do this advisory?
And I'd like to see what other jurisdictions are doing. Like, what is the county doing?
Yes, ma'am.
How do they handle it?
That would be definitely part of our analysis, and what other cities are doing to give you an idea of improvements that we could possibly make to it.
I think this will be very informative. I really do, one way or the other.
Anything to help us make better decisions as we move forward is a good thing.
I got to get you to start pushing the button, then talk. I mean, I'm here in this shadow, and it pops up. Remember, Jordan used to be like that. Yes, yes, yes. No, I'm kidding. Well, actually, literally, I'm hearing you on the... Did it not come up? And then as he's talking, his name pops up. All right, you had your button pushed.
I unpushed it.
Are you unpushed it? Anybody else? Yes, you pushed the button, and then your name pops up here.
See, but sometime I push the button and you ignore it.
No, I don't. No, I felt like that for four years. It's okay, you'll be fine.
Okay. I'm learning.
Just so you know, just so you know, when you push that button, that doesn't mean you automatically get to talk. You're going to have to wait. And when I get done with her, and that could take a while, and then...
I get log-winded.
Which doesn't normally take a while, then I will say, "Member Robinson." So I want to get to say that a little more often. "Member Robinson," is there anything else you want to say?
Yes, yes. You know what I did? I pushed a button.
See?
I pushed a button, and you still ignore it.
No, that's not true.
Then I turned the button off, and I pushed the button again, and you still ignore it.
Here's what happens when you turn the button off.
Right.
You go to the bottom.
I got you.
True, that's absolutely true. You go to the bottom.
Okay. That's why it's a learning curve. Thank you.
So I want you to know, we've never had an ending like that before, but it was a good one. All right. I'm looking again, "Member Robinson," are you going to say anything?
Are you at the bottom?
Okay. Vice Mayor Nelson.
No.
You guys are killing me.
So I just, I hear consensus from our five members that, for us to take a look at.
Well, we have consensus.
And.
All right, I have a couple of things I want to say, and a couple of them are kind of serious, so I kind of want to back up a little bit here. First of all, I appreciate you going that direction, "Member Jordan," I think that's an important step. I just kind of wanted to say, you know, it's been said a lot, but yesterday was the 79th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. I think we'd be remiss if we left here today without at least mentioning that. Sometimes these American tragedies, I don't want to say fade away, but, you know, it seemed like it was a much bigger note when I was a kid, and I don't want that to go away. Every time I see a World War II vet in a hat, I feel like I found gold. There's just not very many of those, and they're very special people. So I did want to say something about Pearl Harbor and honoring them. Next one is really tough. If you've been in the city very long or paying any attention to high school at all, Randy Halleck is a longtime head football coach at Astronaut High School, and he and I were very good friends. Our kids played youth football together, and he was at Astronaut, and I was at Titusville, and even though we were on the other sides of the field, we were just great friends. And as a matter of fact, I'll tell the story that my last birthday, I was at a coach's clinic, and my phone rings, and it's Randy Halleck, and he called just to tell me happy birthday and thank me for our friendship. I'm like, that's a thoughtful, thoughtful person. And he passed away in the last couple of days, and I'll just leave it at that. He passed away in the last couple of days, and it's very sad, very sad for Astronaut High School and all of North Brouard and anybody that knew him. Way too young, I'll just leave it at that. Now, let's move to the happier note. City manager had mentioned that Friday Night Lights, this Friday, is it 6 to 9? I think it's 6 to 9.
I believe so. There's several events going on, so.
Yeah.
The actual, it begins at 3 o'clock with the farmer's market.
Okay.
And then flows into other events, so it'll be pretty robust.
Well, let's make it a very happy and exciting holiday time, because our chances to get together over this holiday season have been very limited, I get that. I can't imagine, and I always say at this meeting, how our city, it loves a parade, and I cannot wait until next year when we can have a parade. I mean, you know, let's face it, you know, one of the things you look forward to is you get to be the mayor and you're in the parade, no you don't. So, or you get to be on the city council, and you're in the parade, no you don't. So, you know, and quite honestly, it's just, our city gets into a parade like no other, which quite honestly is one of the reasons it became so tough to try to pull it off. When you come down the end of that parade route, and they're six deep on each side, you better still have candy left, or you're in big trouble. That's, that's a lot of problems with the virus, so I hate that. We didn't get to have the parish tree lighting, which I love, we didn't get to have our city lighting, all the things that bring us together, the holidays, we don't have, we have this one event, let's make it big. But do remember, we're all in this together, and make, you know, Christmas is what you make it, and let's make it big. So with that, I hope to end and remind people all the time, you are Titusville, I am Titusville, and we are Titusville, and we will make this work, and we will have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I wish you guys a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and if you hold that button long, you can talk a long time. We'll get there, my friend, we'll get there. But I am blessed, we've said this before, and we have another tremendous, great member, but we've said this before, whether we're all on the same page, on the same vote, whatever, we respect each other and have a council, and again, I think Member Jordan has said it probably more than any of us, just look at the newspapers sometimes and see how these other councils go. Look at some of these newspaper articles, or just pay attention and realize the difficulty some of the people and councils have with their city managers or their city, we're blessed to be here. I am blessed and honored to be the mayor. I can hardly say it. I mean, to be the mayor, it's just amazing to me. So with that said, you know, I don't want to get, "I love you, man," or all that stuff, but I love you guys, I love you guys.
Can we say a good Merry Christmas cheer as we go out the door?
Do we have a Christmas cheer? Say? Well, anyway, Merry Christmas.
No, no, say.
Wait, 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 wait.
Merry Christmas. And city manager, I just want to make sure I got that in. City manager?
Yes, sir, and I have no action items, just a couple of information items, and I'd like to echo your comments. It's been a very difficult year on staff as well, and I believe we've come through with flying colors.
Agreed.
Staff really appreciates that we kept them whole during this event, the COVID. They're jubilant that we were able to do a reasonable budget. When other cities are cutting and working into reserves, we were able to do a good budget this year. I pray and I hope next year's budget will be as solid as this one is, but on behalf of our 540 employees, we really do appreciate all that city council does for our city and all the support that you give our staff. So thank you very much, and hope you have a wonderful holiday, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Years from staff.
Uh, Member Robinson? No. Member Jordan?
My wife wouldn't like that, that's for sure. The letters that we received, were you going to talk about that at all, or it was just for information?
I'm sorry, sir.
The letters that we received, the copies of letters that we received.
I'm sorry, I don't know which.
Emails?
Was I the only one that got copies of the letters?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ignore it.
Okay. Okay, all right. Anything else, anybody? Merry Christmas. All right. Meeting.
Merry Christmas.
Adern.